...schools empower all students and become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We don't have to...oh yeah, we're gonna...
Will table 7B before you approve the agenda?
Okay. Oh, here it comes. So I would take a motion to approve the agenda with 7B table.
Sure. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. John, you can go ahead and take over at consent items.
Any questions on the minutes of the financial statement? I just had a couple bills I'll touch on. Card member services with some travel expenses, some fuel expenses, some classroom supplies. In the middle of the first page, DHS cashier for Medicaid expenses. That's the deal once again where we reimburse Medicaid, but we have to pay a portion of it back to DHS. So I think we keep about two-thirds and about one-third goes back to the state. A little farther down, JMC computer service for $6,800. That's next year's student day ways for all four buildings. You'll see a similar bill in launch for theirs. And the activity fund, card member services was primarily FFA expenses. Couple other small ones, I think, for students against restrictive decisions, but primarily without one. And then the other one in there, fair play scoreboards. It's a baseball scoreboard for $4,500, but we were reimbursed half of that by the boosters. So our total expense will just be half of that $4,500. So anything else you want me to touch on?
This team builds the SAK utilities budget.
I'm guessing we didn't give any time, so you'll proceed twice next month.
Okay.
We'll probably have to do a prepay to get this month caught up.
You read everything I had on your job?
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the build all right out for $715,000.
Same.
Motion in a second. No questions. All opposed, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries three zero. And then I'd entertain a motion to approve the February 16th amendments, the February financial statements and the remaining bills on account.
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Motion and a second by Lisa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four.
Okay, so then we'll move on to reports.
Yep, I've got three things listed in your packet and you will see twin lights conference sportsmanship ratings for girls' basketball, boys' basketball and wrestling. I'm sitting here right now, I was thinking I didn't ever include football. So I have those. I will just go back and get football and make sure that I include those. Once we get to spring sports, I'll make sure those are enclosed as well. I didn't have any comments about them. I just want to make sure that you had a chance to take a look at those and see what they look like.
Is there a ball or not too?
Oh, good idea. Yes. Well, I don't know if we might have one. I'll look up everything from the ball that comes from the Flin likes conference. The only column I might explain to you is over on the right-hand side where it says percent return. So the total number, I'll call them ballots that are presented. This would be the percent that are actually returned so that our conference AD can do some calculations with them, those who get into reps. So.
And the scale is one, two, four? Well, it looks to me like we've got awful good spans of sportsmanship within our Flin likes conference. There are 1.5.
Yeah, there are. It's over the boys' basketball. So anyway, those are just pieces of information. Like I said, I didn't even think about till now about ball sports. So I'll bring those and then the spring we'll have track and we'll have baseball, softball through the summer. So I'll just try to make sure that you know if you can get to how to take that with the goal. Calendar update, and it's not for the calendar next year, it's for the current calendar. We have extended the school year by one day. That would be currently the last makeup day that we have to have. So students will now, preschool through 11th grade students will complete the year on the 22nd. So it's one day longer than previously scheduled. Seniors will then add one day and they'll be completed on Friday the 15th. Teacher work day will be the 26th on a Tuesday. And then we'll, we have seven days of professional development. Two are already scheduled at the end of the school year and then five additional for makeup days. And the process of working on scheduling those right now, so the next morning you'll be able to tell you what that looks like. Currently, we are scheduled for professional development day on April 20th. And our plan is to have a PD day that day. We just have them since December, since we've had a professional development day and we really need to have that one. We've been too far away from some work that we've started. And I'll catch you up on what that all looks like. But that will keep us where the calendar that you voted, that you approved last chair placed. Which was 1,120 hours without parent teacher conferences. The minimum for state law is 1,080, but schools aren't writing them for 1,080. They're writing them for some number more than that. And the Department of Ed expects schools to meet their calendar with the board approved because that's really policy. So we'll be within a couple of hours, somewhere 1,120. I'm kind of thinking maybe we actually had 1,118 scheduled in the beginning. Maybe we were off a couple hours. I'm not sure, but it looks like we'll be at 1,118 or 1,120. So we are fine. So that you know, we send our calendar to the Department of Ed. So they know what our original calendar looked like. They'll know what our final calendar looked like. We have to have professional development, but there's no code that says how many days of professional development. Because there's some misinformation out and around about, well, there have to be at least four days of PD or have... No, there isn't a number. We just have to have a number that seems adequate for what the district wants to have. Our 1,120 hours were scheduled in 170 days of time for kids. And we're off a little bit on those days because we had some late starts and early releases because of weather. Now, our early releases before holidays are for a master contract and those were already built into the calendar. But when we had some of those snow days where we started two hours late. And we had that one infamous day where we did two hours late and then we got out early as well. But in the cumulative hours of instruction that day. But in that original calendar that was approved by the board about a year ago now, I would say, or April or May, somewhere in there. The 1,120 hours were met in 170 days. And we, if you remember, you added, we start early and we post a little bit later. So you have a 1:15 start, a 3:15 end of day. And that also made a difference in the numbers of days for students. All I want to make sure is that you would kind of recollect or remember because parents sometimes ask you or community members ask you, so what's going on with the calendar and how this all works. Our teacher contracts are 185 days for our regular teachers, those that are non-extended. So all along there were 15 extra days between when students went and between contract dates. So thus the PD days at the end of the year, because we took PD days as makeup for kids to try to keep our end date as close to the originalized.
What are you hearing from the state for starting next year? Is that still up in the air?
I'm talking about it today and we don't know if it's the House or Senate.
I haven't read that. One side says anything after August 23rd was fine with them and then the other side was kind of saying they didn't care anymore. Is that what you heard?
The House, the House has the August 23rd. The Senate has the anything after July 1st.
If they can't agree, then it reverts back to the old policy, which will be August 30, whatever, right?
I did read that this weekend, that it would revert to the original, which was anytime the week of September 1st, which would be the 31st of August.
They have both, both segments have approved something now, so it'll go to conference committee.
Some, some schools are getting anxious to put their calendars together for lots of reasons. And they're planning on starting the week of September 1st just because they know that's a safe date. So, and for the record, we've done nothing on the calendar. If we get to our site visit and there hasn't been anything done legislatively, we'll get started on something, probably a couple different versions. But right now, we've got plenty of work to do and I don't know that it's going to hurt anything not to have a calendar for right now, so. Are there any other questions from the board that you can think of related to that calendar? Seniors, five days less than the pre-K through sixth grade for 1,050 hours. We're okay in each, on each count, so. Okay, the third thing that's on the list for the superintendent's request is accreditation visit. I've asked the President and Vice President Chris and Brent to serve on an interview committee. By having two rather than three or more, we don't have to post it as a meeting. They, I gave them a set of interview questions. Their interview is Tuesday evening at 5:15 to 6:30.
Or thereabouts.
Or thereabouts, yeah. Here might be a couple of other dates and times if you're interested. On that same Tuesday morning at 9:45 will be the district's presentation to the DE reps. 9:45 on Tuesday, April 14th, and you're welcome to attend that. We'd just like an RSVP if you're going to be there, so we know if we're going to have more than three of you. On Thursday, which is the last day, they will be gone by noon. And we'll have to let you know, but well, that sounded bad. They told us they would be done by noon, I should say, they'd be gone by noon. But they'll be done by noon and they'll give, like their completing remarks sometime close to that noon time. So when we know more about that, we'll let all of you know because any one of you would be invited to attend that. And that would be also probably interesting if a couple of you at least could be there. I would guess it'll be on 11, 10:30, 11 o'clock range, but we can let you know. Because once they get working on that Tuesday and Wednesday, they'll kind of formalize that as they go along. So the initial information, Tuesday at 9:45 in the morning on April 14th. Sometime before noon on Thursday, their final remarks and then these guys will be interviewed on Tuesday at 5:15. Comments or questions about the accreditation visit?
What do you mean? You're going to be helping with these questions?
I'm out of breath when I'm walking over there.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll move on to unfinished business. Discuss 2015, 16 proposed budget.
Yep, I basically put the same information in your packet that I had last month. And the only change I made was lower the cash reserve levy to a point where it would give us the same tax rate for next year that we currently have for this year.
How much did you lower? What were you talking about?
I was at 150, I believe, Brent, so 40 or 55 thousand. This sets it right at 1208, which is what we're at currently. I didn't really want to, I didn't want to see us lower the management because we've gotten a little behind there. And I didn't want to give up any of the things that create spending authority with them. So this was one area that was real easy to, and we have, we have not had to borrow any money. So we're not at a cash shortfall per se. So I think this is something that would be difficult if it's, you know, if it interests you, if that's what your goal would be. Now, if the legislature, this is figured at one and a quarter percent allowable growth. If the legislature gives us more allowable growth, that would slightly lower this. Well, just depending on what they do, I guess we don't, we probably don't think we'll hold that answer either before we have to approve it, so. We've just got to be pretty rough. We have to have it to the county and to the state by April 15th, so we would need to meet on the 14th or 13th.
Yeah, so tonight really what we want to do is we want to, we want to let you know that we're okay with this and then you can put this in the paper.
Yeah, I just need to know if you want this budget in the paper or the one we did before or something in between. And then we'll get that in the paper and publish our 10 to 20 days in advance so we can ever hear it.
I was okay with last budget presentation, so if we lower in tax rates a little bit, you say we don't have a cash shortfall, I have a listen to you.
Any other motion on that? No, I just, a little direction, if this proposal's okay with everybody, I'll go through it, make sure it's okay and we'll have it published in time at the next meeting.
I'm fine.
We need to make it before the 15th, but.
I just don't want to cram too much into a couple nights for everybody's going to be going through that, that psych visit. I mean, we have a meeting the 13th and they have stuff going on until the 14th.
We actually should probably have the board meeting. We can talk about that when we get, we probably actually should have it on the 13th.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can do it. You have a council meeting.
It's seven.
Seven, but if we can do it early, we can order it all night. Part of our issue the night of the 14th is we're just going to have a lot of groups of people around this field.
A lot of rooms.
So it's Tuesday anyway. Yeah, but we just thought maybe since he had our council meeting, maybe we would go on the Tuesday, but if we can do it early. And at least in our preliminary conversations about what some of the things will be for the agenda next month, I don't think there's anything that's the kind of thing that's long and drawn out or not anticipated. When we get toward the end, we can talk about that, but great conversation about how we do it.
So we're in agreement then that we're okay with the budget that's presented here?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so go ahead and put that in the paper. Okay, then we'll move on to discuss and to approve board policies.
There's three policies, four policies. Two policies. Three, three. There are policies in your packet. Policies in the packet. It never shows up on your printed document. On that first policy, 302.1 Superintendent Qualifications for Collegiate Managership. It's in the second paragraph, the 1, 2, 3, fourth line down, there's just a little tiny bit of gray on that and it says the word creed. So second paragraph, fourth line down, it says race, creed, color, religion, sex, national origin. Those are the qualifications. It's really what it's talking about is non-disclamation. And we did not have the word creed in there and it needs to be. So that's the addition that policy. Go to 303.2, I managed to put it in bold so you can at least see it and it was highlighted and it's the same thing. This would be administrator qualifications. That's the very next one. It's in literally the same place. This would be for principals and other administrators, so that's the change again. And then in 905.2, it's a change in the language for the tobacco-free environment. And so you can see what's in bold. It says our off limits for tobacco use, comma, and then here's where it changes, including the use of nicotine products that are not FDA, food and drug administration approved for tobacco cessation. And then if you, if you jump down a couple sentences, it says persons failing to abide by this policy. That's a word that's in the segment, are recorded to extinguish their smoking materials, those of the tobacco slash nicotine product or leave the grounds. So those are the changes that now meet the law. And we did not have that language up to date for the tobacco-free environment.
Are electronic cigarettes considered smoking?
Yes, and they're also considered a nicotine product. Actually, I was contacted by our... Mike, what's the group you, you and Eki made it, the support agencies? I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. You just had a meeting last week.
Oh, I'm spicetay.
Within that group, there's someone that's making sure that all schools in the county have updated tobacco policies and smoke-free environment policies. And then with that, we'll get new updated signs to be posted once this policy's voted on. It was just a formality of them introducing it to us and saying, this is the policy that's approved. So those would be the three. Motion to change those policies. That's David.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in a second to amend the policies as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, so we'll move on to resignations.
Yep, and just a note about 7B. It will be added to next month's agenda. That would be the, mostly the one-to-one. And they're just not quite ready to make a recommendation yet, so that will come to the board next month. Resignations. We've got a couple of them in your packet and then you have one laying in front of you that we received since the time of the board meeting. The first resignation, I guess, from Greg Robinson, high school science. Second one is Kyle Stride, physical education, had girls' basketball and girls' golf. And then the one that's laying on the table in front of you is Taylor Hanson, a sixth grade teacher at the middle school. And after you accept those, I want to talk you through what we're going to do about replacing or not replacing them.
I make a motion, we accept them and please, please let them know thank you for all the years of service.
Second. Got a motion in a second to accept the resignations as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
One of the things that principals and I have been trying pretty diligently to do is keep track of what our student counts look like and what our section sizes look like, as well as just trying to get a grip that if we had some staff leaving, what we would do as far as considering replacing them or not. Mr. Robinson teaches high school science. We have two full-time high school science teachers, Mr. Waggy and Mr. Robinson. We must replace Mr. Robinson. So we'll start, we'll post first, so you remember the procedure. We post in the building, so we have an opening in case anyone has the right licensure, they can transfer to the position. But we will also then shortly begin advertising for a full-time practice teacher. Second position, high school, well, physical education, forget high school. Physical education, had girls' basketball and girls' golf coach. Same thing with this position. We're going to have to replace it at full-time as well as the coaching positions. Mr. Hanson, and as you've already stated in his letter, he'll be leaving, he's getting married this summer. He's going to leave to head with his fiance, a graduate, she'll be, has been accepted at graduate school at North Texas, University of North Texas. He currently teaches sixth grade social studies and he does some digital literacy for us. Our current middle school numbers have changed quite a bit from when we were first sharing. And we will be looking at a middle school in the past in a range of the 60s. Like the upper 50s, mid to lower 60s per grade. So we're not talking about 80s and up into the 90s for middle school kids. The fifth grade next year, I'm using numbers that are from mid-January student counts. But our fifth grade next year will have 65 students. Our sixth grade, 59. Seventh grade, 58. And eighth grade, 61. We currently have three sections of fifth grade and that's been in place, I actually didn't ask the fifth grade teachers, but at least two years. This may be the third one, I'm not sure. So they've been a three-section group. Our fifth grade kind of operates autonomously from the rest of our middle school, meaning that they're in a wing, kind of to themselves. They also have a built-in recess. They've got a cadre of teachers that work with them. There are three sections and everything, it's not as self-contained as elementary is, but it's kind of that first step to the sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So there are three sections, but the sixth, seventh, eighth grade continue to be four sections. My recommendation is that we don't rehire for Taylor's position. And that we move sixth, seventh and eighth grade to three sections as well. So if you take a look at the numbers that we have, we're talking about 20, 21, 22. If we can have balanced class sizes with those numbers. Here's what I'd like you to think about. I've talked, we have a schedule determined for the middle school. There's been some conversation about, for instance, in eighth grade, we have about 13 to 15 kids. For next year's eighth grade, that will be in algebra. So then it will leave the rest of that grade to be in two sections of math. So 24, 25, 26 kids. But I'm going to temper that for you with the fact that we have class sizes that have a wide range of numbers right now. At seventh grade to sixth grade, the person who teaches math told me she has three sections of 12 and then a section of 16. Well, it's sort of like in high school, we can never get, if we have four sections, it's available, so we've got 80 kids, they're never 20, 20, 20, 20. Because I'm going to sign up to take some ed classes, you're going to take art, you're going to take industrial tech. And so it just kind of causes some imbalance. You might have eight and then you might have 22. I was looking at our high school Spanish, for instance, and we have a section of 26 freshmen, but she also has a section of 14. So that's kind of that example at the high school of how odd those sizes can be, even though nearly all freshmen take Spanish. In our elementary, we have 15 in each section and kindergarten in the SAC building, but we've got 22 and 23 in each section and Walet in the kindergarten. Those are five. They came as five-year-olds and they were 23 all day long. So when I think about that, middle school, well, we have 26 in kindergarten, first grade and SAC in one section with an associate that has a teaching license. We've hired her for three hours a day, so that there are two teachers for a block of time at least. I have great confidence that you reach a place in grade levels where kids can be in a little bit bigger class sizes. I would hate to see 30 kids in a classroom, but we're not talking 30s. And frankly, with effective instruction and the supports and resources that teachers need, we can be around those 20s or 24, 25. And we're fine. It's a mindset and we're going to go through in the next two or three years some kind of tough decisions about section sizes because we're kind of moving to that odd number. I worked for a superintendent at Manning who said that when you can have multiples of 300 students, Barb, you'll always have section sizes that seem all right. Because three sections, 300 students is about, often it's two sections per grade. And those multiples just tend to kind of fall out into better numbers. And when you're moving from one, 900, down to 600, it gets to be awkward. And we're in that position, okay, in some places. I do not feel uncomfortable at the middle school saying to you, we should not rehire Taylor. Now, if we get 40 new kids in the middle school, you know what, have at it, we'd be happy to hire another teacher and have bigger sections. I also think that you understand that rather than reduce and force, we are in a much better position if we can take resignations, rehirements and be very careful about whether we have to have them back or not. And think about this, this middle school with these, with these numbers, in around the 60s, the low 60s to the high 50s, is going to be moving to the high school and then we're going to have to be looking at the high school and some things that will have to happen. Only difference in the high school is we have to offer and teach. That's the law. And there's certain things we have to offer and certain things we have to teach, and then there's certain numbers, of course. So you get to low numbers in the high school and sometimes they're unavoidable just because of the state law. But I, I think we just have to be thoughtful when we can be. This won't cause anyone to have to be ripped because we won't go back in. This won't cause anyone to have to be ripped, because we won't go back in. The middle school special ed position, Mrs. Boosis, I think we should sit tight on that and not do anything, and just see, once we get closer to school setting, whether we rehire enough. We overspend in special ed, and if we're gonna get that under control in some way or another, it's got to be personnel. We will provide plenty of special ed teachers for the special ed students we have. We may end up hiring, I don't know. But I just think we, we should be more cautious, and this might be the chance to do that. So that's more than you probably expected to hear from me, but I think it's good if you kind of get the feeling for what the principals and I are thinking, and that we are just, you know, flying by the seat of our pants without knowing what those section numbers are, and kind of why we think we need to do what we need to do.
What kind of trend are we seeing at the elementary level? What do we think will be coming in next year?
We will have sixteen, forty-one. We're gonna have a really safe number in kindergarten next year. We're working at, be smaller than our preschool. Right now, I think, Mike had told me, we have ten signed up at Walleye for preschool, which would be four-year-olds. Now, we always, we know that we're always gonna get more, but when you only have ten right now, Mike, you can jump in on what I'm saying, but, Mike, I just talked about.
I think we're, I think we're at fifteen, fifteen or seventeen, I can't remember.
Okay, see, now, we just talked last week, and it was ten, so that's how quickly it can change. We know there's more than ten.
Beginning garden, you're talking?
Preschool. Preschool, four, four-year-olds. We're being very careful to call the four-year-old program preschool, and then the five-year-old program that's not kindergarten is transitional kindergarten, so we can keep those. We were confusing people with the kindergarten, and we just decided it's preschool, which is the state name for four-year-olds. And then transitional kindergarten, and then kindergarten. And if we can get used to saying that, then we'll all know what we're talking about. Because I had a parent call me, actually, what happened, and how we talked about this, the parent called, and they were talking about preschool, but they called it TK. And I didn't know the age of their student in the phone call, and so I was advising them about whatever, got off the phone, and happened to know who the daycare provider is for them, and I thought, well, that can't be right. Went out, got on JMC and looked, and I'm like, shoot, I had the whole wrong conversation with the parent, had to call them back and talk about it, and I thought, we have to have the same name to make sure we understand this, so.
Isn't there a meeting coming up for that preschool, correct?
Yeah, in the March.
We have eighty in third grade right now. So you could say, well, gosh, if you've got eighty in third grade, they'll be in fourth next, and then only one more year, and they'll be in the middle school. You're right, that is what happens, but who knows? We won't lose fifteen kids out of there, but what I'm saying. Now I've lost my train of thought.
No, but, yeah, you're right, I mean, eighty.
Yeah.
Eighty in three sections.
Yeah, so if a teacher says to me, well, from the middle school, what are we gonna do when we get eighty? When we get eighty in fifth grade, then we'll talk about what we're gonna do. Maybe eighty, we actually go right back to the fourth section.
Because some of the kids could move out, or perhaps a woman would move in.
It really doesn't make sense to hire a Taylor back, a person who can't keep his place back right now, because there's eighty kids in third grade. There are plenty of really high-quality elementary teachers that we can hire when we need to. So that won't be the, that won't be the issue. I'm gonna share something else, we'll be bringing all of this up. We are getting very few applicants for high school positions and very few quality applicants. I'm gonna ask you to approve an English candidate who's a high-quality candidate. We interviewed again today, and right now, with the applicants we have in our pool, we're not interviewing anyone else unless we get someone that. Math, we're gonna interview next Monday, a candidate that looks like a strong candidate. And we're gonna have a student teacher in math who sounds as if he'll be a strong candidate, and thankfully, he'll be here then, so we can get a couple weeks' look at him and maybe interview this second candidate. We're gonna have quite a time in, in high school science as well. We've got a read, I made a phone call to BB, and just said, who's your best secondary science student teacher? And she said, well, actually, we have probably one of the best ones we've had in the last two or three years, and he wants to stay in the areas. I'm not sure where he's from, but he's applying. We don't have a saying shipped, and I got him down tonight just before the meeting that he's, he'll apply. But honestly, he may be the only candidate we have that applies to them. These high school positions, well, and a lot of middle school positions, that we are so short of candidates, and then short of candidates that have strong background, or even if they're inexperienced, that have strong preparation programs. So we're just a bit districed about English right now, but we'll find one. The good thing is, we're the middle of March, we're not the middle of June. We haven't advertised in Duane Register, we've advertised on Teach Iowa, which we think is at least as good as that, but if we have to, we can hit a newspaper or a journal. We've advertised in Omaha before, just to try to get a little further from home. There are lots, there are quite a few applicants in English, just not very high quality. And we kind of know what we want and need, so it's just a heads-up, so you understand kind of what the pool of people looks like. Physical education, we'll probably have quite a few applicants, I would guess, yeah. But then, you know, it will be to find quality will be the big thing there, yeah. So if we were hiring back for Taylor, I think we'd have several applicants, probably, because middle school social studies, I'm pretty sure that there would be an adequate number.
I'm along the same lines as that, is what you're talking about, though. Don't hire if we don't need to for two years down the road.
Yeah, and I'd rather us not have to be in the reduction and force mode, which is very negative. It always feels, that's a tough feeling, versus, let's look at them as people that we do. And we'll probably have a neighbor to hopefully to bring to you for contracts for next month, so. But that's probably more than you needed or wanted to know, but I really feel like you have to understand where we're coming from, so you kind of get the drift of what it's all about.
Okay, so we'll move on to contracts. And, you know, I don't think we have too much information. When we get asked out on the street, I think it's good to have all that information, so then we can talk to people. So thank you for that. So it's like we've got four contracts here to approve.
The first one, from Alyssa Cleveland, would be high school English. We don't have a salary amount yet, because we haven't settled negotiations. That salary will be set by master contract.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in about her, she'll be a first-year teacher, U N I grad, student teaching in Pocahontas right now, and came from West Ben Maller Student Teaching. Really good interview and good student teaching reports from her. So she'll be teaching freshman English, about two or three other things, but she'll have freshman English for sure. So what we're looking for is that sophomore English teacher.
Good. Greg Viegas for assistant baseball, would be the position held last summer by Jacob Ricky. I think he's got other plans this summer. Todd Vontrager's track contract, Kiel Bravy had that contract, and then we let him go in January or February when we got his other job. And then Mr. Waggy from middle school track, his number's warranted, he's always been our third guy, and so we only issue him a one-year contract, it's not a continuing deal. Sounds like according to Taylor, they need all three issued, so that's what we got going on there.
So I would entertain a motion to approve contracts as voted. The motion in a second to approve four contracts as presented, all in papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. Discuss future agenda items and set dates. So what we talked about a little bit earlier today, we're doing the meeting on April thirteenth. We would have to start it at five, and I would like to have it here if we can. Makes it easier for me to get to Walleye for my council meeting. I would get there about six-thirty or so, so. And I don't think there's gonna be a lot on it. So I guess that's up to you, Eric.
Some things we know we need on it, our, we'll have to have a budget hearing, and we'll bring that middle school technology back to you. We should be able to give you negotiation, contract information. I'll put calendar on here for fifteen and sixteen, but I'm guessing that probably won't happen, that'll probably remain.
Did you say master contract?
Yeah.
What are your guys' thoughts on the tech contract? Is that something that we need to talk about next month, or is that?
We're gonna have some discussions on that internally, and I'm trying to get some stuff ready for you.
Okay. So maybe wait another month, or, I don't know, I guess.
People are making a lot of discussions.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten about it.
No, I continue to get asked about it, so. So we're gonna go.
Five o'clock early, though?
Thirteenth, yeah.
Jane, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Were you, I guess, a person?
No, I was just, I was just thinking.
I was gonna figure out how we need to hear from you.
It's gonna start snowing again, don't worry about it.
Next week.
I really am gonna be nervous, getting ready again.
Next week?
Okay, I think we're ready to do the.
It'll be during.
Second.
In the second, all papers say aye?